I'd like to welcome everyone to the Alleghenner County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on May the 5th, 2025. At this time, we will ask Commissioner Herman to give our invocation, and then following, Commissioner Lael will give our pledge of allegiance.
If you would bow with me. Dear heavenly fathers, thank you for letting us come this way this afternoon. Lord, just be with us through this meeting. Lead, guide, direct us. Lord, just thank you for our law enforcement, our first responders, firemen, and everyone that keeps us safe every day, Lord, and gets them back home to their families. Dear Lord, we just thank you for the rain you sent this past weekend and the beautiful sunshine that we have outside today. Be with our mothers this next Sunday as we celebrate Mother's Day. And, Lord, just give everyone safe travel back home from here tonight, and everything we do will be in your name. I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please place the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, does any commissioners have a report to give?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say I was able to attend the national day prayer at Paul at Courthouse Park. Commissioner Lael spoke there. Had a pretty good turnout. Only one thing I noticed, you know, we do a lot of things in the county, and the articles of the Constitution and then the Constitution itself, the glass was broken on probably two or three of those things. I don't know if it's something from inside or from the top, but it was shattered, you know, looking, you couldn't see through a couple of them. So hopefully that wasn't done intentionally by anyone, but it was a good turnout for the day prayer, and, you know, we need to pray for our country and for each other every day.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add, I had the privilege of praying for, you know, the government, I guess you'd say. And all I'll say is, my prayer was not as eloquent as some others. It was, but it was very, I mean, it was a, it was a good experience and a good event.
Anyone else? Well, I am going to use this time for a personal matter, so I apologize. Not, well, I guess I do. I want to wish my own mom a Happy Mother's Day, so if she's listening, I just want to tell her that. Moving right along to adoption of agenda.
Make a motion to adopt as given to us.
Second. First and a second. Any questions or concerns? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Do we have any public comment?
Sir.
Moving right along. At this time, we'll move into a public hearing. Text amendment TA-25-02, land development code, given by Patrick Creach, senior planner. Do I have a motion to enter a public hearing?
Second.
Second.
First and a second. All in favor, right hand. Motion carries. Podium's yours, sir.
Thank you, commissioners. Briefly, I want to speak about the text amendment that is being proposed. This was proposed by the members of our planning board in March in order to address the issue that occurs whenever one of the members is absent. They are suggesting that we create an alternate member seat that can serve and can plug in whenever someone is not there. This is especially important whenever members are absent because if we are considering a variance, an absence is considered a vote against that variance, and those require super majorities. This person would still be considered a member of the board and would be encouraged to attend all meetings, even ones in which they are not voting. And I believe you have a copy of the text that was drafted that would be placed in the land development code for that. Does anyone have any questions in regards to this proposed amendment?
This is a public hearing, so anyone in attendance can speak. Anyone on the board have a concern or a...
I think it seems to be a good idea. You know, it's always good to have, you know, someone available if someone can't show up, and a lot of things go on that we don't know about until it's going to happen sometimes. So, you know, I think that would be good.
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
First and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thanks, sir. Do we have a motion to approve text amendment?
Make a motion to approve the text amendment as stated.
Second.
First and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll call forth Sheriff Chad Pennell in reading of a resolution. I was really hoping you had Otter in here today.
I do have Otter.
There we go.
All right.
He wants to go on the newspaper.
All right, this is the, we're asking for a resolution to be signed so Otter can retire. It says, whereas the Alleghenner County Sheriff's Office has a canine named Otter that has reached the age and work life for the, for a law enforcement canine, and whereas North Carolina General Statute 160A-266 and 160A-267 permit the county to surplus or sell surplus property, personal property by private sale upon authorization of the Board of Commissioners at a regular meeting and notice to the public. And whereas North Carolina General Statute 17F-21 permits the county to transfer ownership of retired service animals at a price determined by the local government. Now therefore, be it resolved that, the Alleghenner County Board of Commissioners find that Otter, Canine Otter, shall be retired from service and ownership transferred to his handler, Dylan Adams, who will be responsible for all further medical and housing expenses. The Alleghenner County Board of Commissioners authorize the sheriff to sell Canine Otter and various items related to the care of the service animal for private sale to Dylan Adams for the sum of $1. The clerk of the board shall publish a notice summarizing this resolution, and the sale may be executed pursuant to this resolution until the, at least 10 days after the date the notice is published, adopted this day, the 5th of May, 2025. I just wanted to say a couple of things, if I could, tell about Otter a little bit. We got Otter from York County Sheriff's Office, so he started his work then. There, we got him in April of 2022. Otter has over 100 fines in his career. I remember the last one that he had was an elderly gentleman up in Bethlehem. So, he's had to have some major surgeries. Otter's getting ready to be 11 in June, and what he was, has been doing here lately was, he was our, working as a school resource officer at Telesa Elementary School and having a good time with the kids there. And we were going to let him continue. Dylan has, is leaving us, so that was the reason, one of the main reasons for, for letting Otter to retire. Him and Dylan get along too good, and it was just not worth trying to move Otter to somebody else. So we would greatly appreciate y'all signing this resolution.
Bring Otter right up here in the front so everybody can see him.
Standard operating procedure when you catch a criminal, you had to run. I mean, that dog, I mean, they still, okay, they still do it. All it is, is that some of you don't know, is whenever you're in pursuit of somebody that you're chasing with the bloodhound, and the bloodhound does such a great job that he saves your life and catches you, then you have to give the dog a hug and tell him how much you love him for catching him. And that's gone over. That's gone ever since I can remember, ever since I was probably about 18 years old, I watched him do that, you know. Because back then, they used to have a lot of people that escaped from the prisons.
Oh, yes.
And they don't do that as much as they did back then.
He's been a huge asset to our office, and we're glad that he's going to a good home and getting his chance to retire.
I believe he's going to a good home.
He is.
Yeah.
So it's my pleasure to ask the board, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
First, second. All in favor, right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
That's very good. Yes.
It's always good when the handler can take his pet home with him. It's a good thing.
At this time, we'll call Mr. John Presnel and Josh Mitchell up to give a Parks and Recreation update.
So thank you for allowing us to take just a few minutes tonight and give an update on the Recreation Department. As you know, we have three seasons. We have fall, winter, and spring. And just to go back to the fall season, just to give you an update on our numbers, we had right at 800 participants in the fall season. That's cheerleading, football, soccer, and volleyball. And we had 67 teams. And in the winter, which is basketball, we had 75 teams playing basketball and right at 600 participants. And then now, currently, we're in our spring season, which is T-ball, baseball, softball, and soccer, and we have 92 teams total right now, and that's 1,100 kids playing. 27 of those are T-ball teams, which is an all-time high for us. This is great. We had 39 soccer teams in the fall, which we do four different ages then. We do three in the spring, and we have 29 of those are soccer teams. We'll also be hosting a district, 13 to 15 boys All-Star Tournament at East Alexander Park, July the 10th through the 16th, so we're excited about that. And I just wanted to say I thank you, to all of you, for all your help in renovating Bethlehem Park. It turned out wonderful. They actually put up the basketball goals today, and we're hoping on the pickleball, on the weather. So I'm hoping that maybe any day they'll start on it, and it should be complete. But I've had a lot of calls, a lot of, a lot of positive feedback. People's happy and thankful for it. So thank you to that. And in saying that, we'd like to talk tonight a little bit about the possible upgrades of East Alexander Park. And as I said, we had 39 soccer teams in the fall, 29 in the spring, and it's always, which is a great thing, that soccer's growing, but we're always looking for, for more soccer fields. And I was going to turn it over to Josh Mitchell to talk about that at this time.
Good evening, commissioners. As John said, we are wrapping up Bethlehem Park and would like to maybe turn our attention to upgrades at the East Alexander Park, which everybody knows is located off Old Ninety in between Hidden Knight and Stony Point. I'm thinking that that park was built in the mid-'80s, maybe early-'80s, and like myself, is starting to show some age. Some of the things we've talked about, well, I'll start out. It's about 35 acres. It currently has a walking trail, three baseball, softball fields, and a soccer and football field. There is a concession building currently with bathrooms, and then there are some bathrooms at the lower football field. Some of the upgrades that we have discussed are new bathroom and concession building and some picnic shelters, a new playground. If you have been to East Park, the current playground is stuck back in the woods, and we'd like to bring that out in the open more and upgrade it. Maybe adding two additional soccer fields and a day, additional baseball, softball field. We need to, need to add parking. Would like to upgrade the field lighting. That field lighting is old wooden poles and I believe it's metal halide fixtures, which are original fixtures. And if you ever go to Bethlehem Park, you'll see we just upgraded there to metal poles and LED fixtures. The old metal halides, if you've been to East, you cut them on, they hum, it takes a while for them to come on. These LEDs are instantaneous when you flip them on. It's just like flipping on a light at your house. At East, you know, we currently have a concrete path that goes up to the concession building, and then there's pea gravel all around. We would pave all that where there's no more pea gravel for people to slip on. You know, everybody's got easy access to all the fields. We talked about doing a walking trail around the perimeter of the property instead of the little walker track we have now. That's maybe where we would put soccer fields and then do a trail around the perimeter of the property. Then some of the fields, I think, if we were to try to host travel ball, there's one of the fields that I believe is too short for that. Is that correct, John? So one of the fields will need to be extended, and we would want to do new fencing, backstops around all the fields, and then upgrade those bathrooms at the lower field. So that's some of the stuff we've talked about. It could be more, it could be less, depending on what we can fit. Don't know if we can fit two more soccer fields and a baseball field. So the next step, in my opinion, would be to do an RFQ for an engineer to help us come up with a design and get a probable opinion of cost on the upgrades we'd like to do, and then go from there to see what, what path we'd like to take forward.
What would be projected range of cost to get to a point of coming up with RFQ?
I would say to get the engineering survey and everything done, I would say between $50,000 and $100,000, somewhere in there. And that's the estimate.
Is all the, the 35 acres, is all of it cleared, or is there still some that's not?
There's some that is wooded, and it's not flat. Nothing around here is flat, you know, so. But I think there's dirt we can use in some areas as fill in the others to get the fields that we need to.
Okay.
I got a question for John. You said on spring sports, you're around 1,100 kids, and then you had the 800 and the 600. How's that fitting on the previous, last year or the year before? Is that increasing or stagnant?
Yes, increased. The fall increased, the winter increased, the spring is right at the same. I think spring last year, we had 1080. This year, we're at 1,100. So 20 more kids.
How are the other parks, as far as, is there any others that are in poor condition?
Well, Dusty Ridge is newer than East, but it's got some needs on upgrades as well, just as any. But it's not quite, I don't think it's as bad as each park would be.
So we use Salem Park, do we still, do we maintain those?
Yeah, we do the mowing there and upgrade, like in the ball fields, and play soccer in the outfield there.
Okay.
Maybe trying to get away from that next season because it's so hard for parking, and people's parking across the road, and it kind of gets dangerous, especially on a Saturday when we have T-ball and soccer. So they have to cross the road, so.
Do we have any utilization at JC Park?
We don't right now. I mean, teams practice there, but we don't have any games there. But if we did something like this at East Alexander Park, we would have to play at places like JC Park, and maybe, I mean, Salem obviously as well then, so.
During construction.
During construction, right.
So it'd probably be about a year if we did start it. You won't know for sure until the, you know, engineer comes, but that was about what it took at Bethlehem, right?
Yeah.
A little over a year.
Yeah.
Is there more land needed at East Park if it was renovated?
I think that's maybe a question for the engineer, maybe. I mean, because on the bottom field down there, it goes quite a bit down through the woods. I don't exactly know how far, but it goes a pretty good way.
Does that grade back there still go down?
No, it's not, it's not too bad down that way.
Anybody else?
Google Maps is amazing.
Yeah.
Look at anything you want to.
Thank you, fellas.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
At this time, we're going to hear from our, several of our fire department on budget discussions. First up will be Bethlehem Chief Ashley Starnes. And if you would, limit five to 10 minutes. Well, we all want to go home before 2:00 a.m.
Yeah. I'll try to hurry. Good evening, commissioners. I want to say, thank you for letting us speak tonight and coming out here. First slide I want to show you is, you can go to the next. These are our services. We provide fire protection, fire education and prevention, hazmat response, SWIFT, and steel water rescue, motor vehicle accident heavy rescue services. We also supply EMTs to assist with medical calls in our district. Along with all the services I just named, we, we provide mutual aid to any other fire department that surrounds us, whether it be Alexander, Caldwell, or Cataba needing the services. Our call volume for last year was 695 calls for service. Of these calls, 245 were fire-related, 356 were EMS, 60 rescue, and 17 mutual aid. We recorded 17 pre-planned or education type calls. Out of the 695 calls, Bethlehem only missed one of these calls for service. The county had two of us that we missed. One happened just to be a control burn that our guys didn't do the right paperwork, but we really just missed one call for the year. You can go to the next. We're requesting extra money because we're planning a second station for the department. This department, this department will provide us two benefits. First, it'll eliminate anything out of our five-mile district. We have some off Rink Down Road and B&amp;T. We have a small area that we can't reach right now, and this station will give it to us. Our station is located off of 89 Satellite Road, as you see in the picture above. And the following two slides show you a proposed plan for our new building. This would be the front of it, and then the second slide would be the interior. As you can see, it's a three-base station with sleeping area for eight firefighters. The thought process for this building, something usable for this foreseeable future, no, no matter what we have for response or changes in the fire department, it shouldn't match everything the need that we have. You can go to the next. The cost of the station is estimated right now to be $2.5 to $3 million in total. That puts our payments, as you see, is $291,000 to $198,000 per year, depending on how we finance the department and the station. Next, we have a water line that we have to go, that we'll have to put in. This cost is estimated about a year and a half ago to $125,000. Of course, we talked to both of the past county managers, and they said, maybe the county can help with this because it's an eight-inch line that the city hickory requires to put on the Rink Down Road and run down Satellite Road and stuff like that. Both, the past county managers wanted us to wait till we got more of a detailed, and I guess, ready to start before they, I guess, probably approach y'all or we even ask for y'all. But it's still $125,000 if the county can't give us any assistance on this. Next slide. Staffing for the new station. And one of the main things that our board of directors looked at when they said, build a new station, is that we're going to staff it. Our, our main goal, the Bethlehem Fire Department's answer, in the calls that we have, and they don't want a station sitting empty, and we want having people ride by or go by and say, hey, where's the, where's the people working at it? And so if you see the numbers above, our day shift cost would be about $1,100 weekly or $58,000 yearly, and then the night shift cost about $672 weekly or $34,000 yearly. Right now, as you can see, we have one full-time person's 40 hours Monday through Friday, and then we run a part-time eight-hour shift Sunday through Saturday, and then a part-time eight-hour night shift Sunday through Saturday. 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the daytime, Monday through Friday, and then just one eight-hour shift on the weekends, and then 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. at nights. You can go to the next. Once the station is built, one of the things that we're going to have to look at, and if OSHA passes all the laws that they are going to pass, is looking at new apparatus. Just talking to one of our salesmen and trying to work with him on a FEMA grant, a new pump or tanker cost that we spected out this last week was $967,000, as you can see. So these are some of the reasons that we're asking. We feel that this is a good start. We feel like we could ask for more, but we know that y'all changed the revolve from four years to eight years, so we wanted to see how that affected. Also, we know that there's close to probably 1,000 houses that could be built in our district within the next five to 10 years, so we wanted to see some of that money coming in too before we just jumped too high. And that's why we chose the six cents and not to go higher at this time. Thank you for considering this and giving us a chance to speak. I'll be happy to address any of your concerns or answering any questions that you have. If I don't have the answer, I'll be glad to find it for you.
You did well on the time.
I didn't want y'all to say stop.
Well, I've been, I've been aware of the second station idea for a while, just tearing through the community. And, well, and I mean, you and I had a couple conversations, nothing significant or real serious, but what is, so I mean, just, as my dad would say, to have it run by me again so I can take another shot. The primary reason, I mean, the primary reason with secondary station is response time.
Response time. It would help us on our ISO ratings. We do have a little bit of district that is out of a five-mile, so all those homeowners, and it's actually off of a Rink Down there at B&amp;T Lane from our current station. We just can't make that loop around there and get in there with five miles, so we would get all them in a five-mile district, which will give them our class four, or really, I guess, the class five, because homeowners can't go under class four or class five. We give them that class five rating instead of being the nine rating out of the five-mile district. And two, if you look at where the station is, it's right there off Rink Down Road. It's right there in the heart of where all the new buildings and all the new projects are listed. It gives us an easier shot down to Oliver's Landing where they're building new townhouses and townhomes. It just, it's really going to be a more busier station than our headquarters, or it will be.
What's your ISO rating right now?
We're a 4 slash 9.
4 and 9. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Up next, we have Ellendale Fire Chief Donovan Howe.
Good evening. Thank y'all for, like I said, and I'm just echoing what Chief Ashley said, giving us the opportunity to speak on behalf of our organizations. As the, you know, as I had done last week, I had gave everyone a, sent everyone an email to put it in your packet up there, and I'm just going to kind of paraphrase just a little bit for what I'm, you know, what we're asking for as far as in the Ellendale Fire Department and the paid staff essentially. Ellendale itself, we have 39 members, firefighters, EMTs, TRs, a little bit of everything. Currently, we're staffed between 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday, with two personnel. And out of our own budget, we're doing one person on Saturday from 8:00 to 4:00. Like I said, our frontline engine, just kind of hitting on what Ashley said, you know, our frontline engine's 20 years old. So right now, we're, we're looking in the term of, you know, we're going to have to replace that. And right now, we're spending money out of our general fund for the paid staff in that the county does apply. Now, originally, back in 2018, that was $60,000, then I think it went to $63,000 for the paid staff personnel. Whenever this started back in 2018, it, off the bat, cost us about $62,280 just to staff it. That's no- That's no Medicare, that's no taxes, insurance workers comp. But at the same time, you know, we really wanted to do what we could do for the county, for our department, for our community. So as, you know, back in 2018, that's another thing about the quote that I gave you all just a little bit ago. That same quote I gave you, just to kind of compare some numbers a little bit. One turnout gear coat back in 2018 was, let's see, $1,282. The one I handed you is the most recent one, 2220 for the same coat. The pants back in 2018, 80669, which as you see on the pants, costs a lot more than that now. You're at 1346. That's four sets of turnout gear. The quote I handed you all initially was $19,615. That's for coats, pants, helmet, gloves for four firefighters. We currently have 10 paid staff personnel. So with that, while we're asking for an increase of about 15,000, it's because that gear's not getting cheaper and to retain our employees, we want to make sure that we keep them. The same employees that I've had working since 2018 are still here. And I want to continue to strive for that direction. They've done an amazing job. We've went to every fire department, responded to multiple calls, whether it's motor vehicle accidents, forestry, structured fires itself. Anytime we're requested, even when it comes to just doing hydro maintenance and helping out other departments, we're willing to continue to do that. But the thing is, we are going into our general fund. In the future, we are looking at doing the same thing with, what Bethlehem's talking about doing is doing a station two out toward the Poplar Church area. They are outside of our five mile. Ellendale, we have 50.05 square miles that we do cover. It's a big, it's a big area. And all those, all those folks out there, including Ellendale Sugarloaf, they don't get to take part of our ISO, which is a 5.9. We were a 6.9, but now we're a 5.9 for the most recent back in 2022. So for others, for other citizens, other community to be able to benefit from that, it's critical that we start trying to gear funds toward that. As of right now, we do have funds that we are sitting aside for a station two. But at the same time, we'd like to sit more toward a station two. And without taking more money from our general budget, you know, that's, that's kind of, you know, given a, we're kind of getting hindered there a little bit. So essentially, average, when a homeowner gets lower insurance, you're talking about 4%. 4% on, you know, $100,000 home, which is, when's the last time we seen a $100,000 home? It's been a while, right? So, I mean, you're talking about $400, but you do that over the course of 30 years. That's a big chunk, right? Well, think about your average home now, $200,000 plus. So essentially, what we're trying to do was put another station outside of that jurisdiction. Without, with the extra kind of funding, what we want to do is gear our funds from the paid staff in the county and provide that to our outside, to actually fund our station two. That's what we want to do with station two projects. So the extra funding from the county would help, for one, continue to provide the same service that we're currently doing to all the fire departments, as well as the Ellendale community, and to actually help other citizens, not just in Ellendale, but around the community of Sugarloaf as well.
Question, Don.
Yes, sir.
What's your on-scene travel time from station to your father's point of coverage, you reckon?
On our outside, I'd say probably Brushy Mountain Motorsports. That's where we have a quite big frequency. We're looking at about, if somebody's at the station, about 10 to 12 minutes. Essentially, that's in a fire truck, obviously. If, you know, we don't have somebody staffed during that time, could exceed that a little bit more, depending on where people are coming from, from their homes and stuff.
Just on the, you gave us the cost for, that was for four firefighters?
Just for four firefighters, yes, sir.
How long do those uniforms last or how long can you?
They only last, NFPA recommendation is 10 years. Every 10 years, no matter if they're brand new or not, they have to be replaced if they're interior firefighters.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, sir.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, Hidnite Chief Scott Mitchell.
Once again, thank you, gentlemen, for giving us the opportunity to come to you tonight and give a little bit of explanation for our request. I believe you were able to get an information packet that I sent out as well and have it there in front of you. I'll just paraphrase like Chief Howe did there. So some general information about Hidnite. We provide fire medical and rescue response to citizens of Hidnite and Alexander County. We have 35 volunteers and staff, of which 18 are fully certified North Carolina firefighter twos, 14 are EMTs, 14 are rescue technicians. And we also have a junior program with 10 juniors who are actively growing up, doing what they're enjoying. We are staffed Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:00 p.m. with three certified firefighter EMTs, two of which positions are funded by, as Chief Howe said, the money that is provided by the county, the 63,000, to provide countywide response to aid to structured fires, traffic accidents and CPR calls as needed. Our operating budget pays for our third position that we have during the day that we had prior to the two other positions. Hidnite Fire Department also has a trained land search team that has aided local officials in land searches in the past on several occasions. In 2024, we answered 546 calls for service and our average dispatch time in '24, from the time of dispatch to on-scene time, was seven minutes and 29 seconds. We currently operate two stations, one of which is our main station there in Hidnite on Highway 90 and the other on Chatham Ford Road out in the Gualties community. We currently have four engines, one ladder truck, two brush trucks, three utility vehicles for medical response and one air supply trailer that we use. The newest engine that we have at Hidnite Fire Department is a 2008 model, which obviously is, like I say, reaching that timeframe of being well-used. We also have other used apparatus that we have bought in the past that have been excellent for us in an effort to save money and make our money go further. And there's nothing wrong with those apparatus, they still work. But as he explained with the OSHA rules being what they are, if that all passes, it's something we'll have to definitely look at. Brief explanation of the increase, like Chief Howe said, beginning in July of 2018, the county approved funding of $60,000 for Hidnite Ellendale Fire Department to provide two personnel Monday through Friday to respond to calls throughout Alexander County to assist with manpower shortages. We are beyond grateful for the opportunity to provide this service to the county as it obviously helps our department as well by helping our responses, as well as maintenance on our equipment and facilities. Being able to have three personnel on hand each day is very, was very instrumental in Hidnite Fire Department becoming the first in the county to receive their ISO rating of four. At the time we started this survey, the funding amount was explained to us to provide for up to $15 an hour for those two positions and for the salaries only. Granted, there are some holidays with no staff present, but several of our holidays, we do have people who work. And if the station was staffed every day a week for eight hours a day, five days a week, 52 weeks a year, that came up to 62,400. And that's just salaries, so that didn't include anything as far as taxes, Medicare, social security, other expenses, workers comps higher on paid staff, other things like that. So having the other staff comes with those expenses. So we have always covered those, as well as uniforms and turnout gear and equipment out of our operating budget yearly. So with the, we also started out at a much lower hourly rate in 2018 to make it work out and it worked well. And at some point, we did get that increase to 63,000 and it's also helped some as well. Currently, our salary ranges range from $12 to $17 an hour, depending on how long the firemen have been there and their certifications and qualifications. And that varies. It's not the highest and it's not the lowest, it's a good medium range. Surrounding counties pay a good bit more than that, some of them, and so we just try to stay in a good medium range there. And it's getting harder to keep up with those competition. That's another reason we, we recently did an increase to get them up to that. I did notice a error in my third page there is my requesting money. I miscalculated there. I provided you with those two ideas that we'd sent in. We requested a funding increase, just like Ellendale, of 15,000, but I had 88,000. That should be 78,000 instead of 88 there, that's my mistake. And we, like you said, we came up with that amount. We just figured that was a good amount to bump us up, to cover some of those added expenses. And the fact that it's a service that we provide to the whole county with that 63,000, as opposed to just our citizens, we felt, thought that an increase in that fund might be more appropriate than asking for an increase on our citizens in our tax district. However, the other thing I gave you there was a, or a request of a one cent tax increase for the citizens of Hidnite as well. And I kind of put either or there, but, I mean, obviously, the one cent tax increase would net us more money and we wouldn't so much worry about the 15,000 from your general fund. But we would also incorporate that toward staffing expenses, as well as other things coming up in the department, like I said, apparatus replacement and other things like that. Like I said, these are just requests. Any combination of those requests could be, would make work. And I don't want it to seem like we are ungrateful for the 63 because it obviously helps us out and we hope to continue that service that we provide. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
This time, Sugarloaf Chief Josh Chapman.
Mr. Chairman and Board, I appreciate the opportunity to come speak tonight. I can't say much more than what these fellows have already said. A little bit about Sugarloaf. We started our part-time program, if you want to call it that, in 2022. I started out with two people. And it was a slow start. I've since increased my personnel, my part-time personnel to four people. And that was my reasoning for the increase as requested on the budget forms. We are a class 5.9 fire department, as it stands right now, per our last ISO last year. I have 28 total people and that tends to fluctuate. We have new people coming in, you know, that sort of thing. Right now, we're spending the majority of our given money that we had given to us several years ago for part-time personnel. Pay, taxes, that sort of stuff, equipment, turnout gear and stuff to outfit those guys. As stated before, that stuff's not cheap. And it's, with us only having 173,000 a year to play with, it's kind of tough to make those numbers work sometimes. So that's, that's why we asked for the 3%, or I'm sorry, the 3 cent on the tax increase. As has already been said, and just to hit home the fact, Chief Howe spoke of apparatus in 20, I recently read an article. In 2022, a apparatus, fire truck, equipped, ready to hit the road in 2022, was $750,000. Today, that closest estimate is 1.2 million. I know we've already seen a quote, but... Another thing that has really taxed our department is SEBA equipment. We really need to upgrade those. And for an example, in 2023, a mask, an air bottle, a wearable frame, cost $8,500 roughly. Just this year, in 2025, I received a quote for $9,969.96. So it's steadily going up. And we, I could go back, going back past '23 and you could see steadily the increase, that everything's increasing. As Chief Mitchell said, we're still kind of in the middle as far as what we pay our guys, our part-time staff. We try to hang around the $15 to $17 an hour mark. But we are also competing with surrounding counties, surrounding departments, no offense, guys. And it's getting tougher and tougher to find good quality people to serve our citizens. And like myself, and I'm sure everybody else, we want the best that our citizens can have. And it, it's just hard to find without being competitive. I used the analogy that I heard one time, you know, you can be paying $20 an hour sitting around the station, but when the tone goes off and the pager goes off and it's time for the fire truck to hit the road, they're worth 20 million. So, anybody have any questions? Like I said, I don't have a whole lot, it's not already been said.
Just curious, what's your newest engine? How many years?
Our newest one, we just bought used from Trautman Fire Department, it'd say 2009.
Approximately the distance or the time from your station to your father's, what would you say?
I would say the furthest point from our station, if somebody was at the station and responding in a fire truck, you're looking at 10, 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, Talsville Fire Chief Matt Jordan.
Well, good evening, commissioners. Jamie. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to come and speak tonight on behalf of Central Alexander Talsville Fire Department. Before I start, I want to thank each of the commissioners for the training grounds. It's going to be used for many years to come and be utilized for training. And that's a tremendous opportunity for all the fire departments and EMS rescue squad, sheriff's office, anybody that can use it to train in. So I want to thank y'all, take the time to thank y'all for that. I'll begin, I'll try to keep it short. I just, I got one topic, so. The Central Alexander Fire Department is a considered combination of volunteer and paid staff. We have approximately 40 volunteer members, 10 part-time staff. They cover several shifts during the day and early evenings. Our response district is a five-mile radius that includes the town of Talsville and a mix of urban and rural area that surrounds the town. This, this is in your packet, so you can take a look at it. We do have a junior firefighter program. I was a junior firefighter 34 years ago is when I started at 16. And Keith Monday started a junior firing program many years ago and it was a tremendous asset for us then, tremendous recruiting tool, and we've, we've kept it going. We have roughly 10, 10 to 12 junior firefighters. And I'd be amazed if I didn't mention our auxiliary, our ladies auxiliary does a tremendous job. We have probably eight to 10 of those as well. And they come out and support us on fires, bring refreshments and drinks and do medical evaluations as far as blood pressures and, and stuff like that. So that it helps, they help us out. So I want to take the opportunity to thank, thank them for that. We currently have 25 certified firefighters, 18 MR or EMT medical trained people, 14 driver operators, which is a certification to be able to drive and operate, pump the truck, and 13 technical rescuers. I'm here tonight to talk about, you know, an increase for staffing. That's our biggest priority. That's one of the goals we have as far as our strategic plan in, in the, in the short term, is to try to go 24/7. So... Last year, we had 1,003 calls, 458 of those were fire calls, 466 medical calls and 79 mutual aid calls to surrounding departments. surrounding departments. As the busiest fire department in the county, providing automatic aid to five of the remaining seven fire departments, and mutual aid to all seven, a quick response is something that we take pride in. Ensuring that CAFD, which is Central Alexander Fire Department, staffed around the clock, allows for quick response for not only the citizens in our district, but a large portion of Alexander County. Fires are burning, are beginning to burn quicker and hotter with open concepts, lightweight construction, and newer furniture design, a lot more plastics now than what it used to be, so they burn quicker and hotter, fires burn faster. So, trying to have a goal, get the truck out the, out the door, go into a call with somebody there all the time, especially at night, try to minimize that. We also, like I said, it enforces a need for a quick response and twenty-four-seven coverage. CAFD started with part-time staff fifteen years ago. We were the first fire department in the county to utilize part-time staff, and with little changes due to funding since then, CAFD would like to pursue additional funding options to increase staffing levels to twenty-four-seven coverage, and begin to plan for full-time positions in the future. And adding this coverage now for the part-time part of it is a step in that process. It also will help improve our, our ISO rating, you know, in the future, we're Class Five That's all I have, unless y'all got any questions.
Anyone?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think lastly, we've got Vashita Chief Cody Fox.
Thank you, guys, for having me. Apologize for not having this in your packet, but I was out of town when we found out we were coming to meet with you. I'll try to get this to work. This is much like the letter I attached in my budget that I sent to y'all. Thank you for having me again. I'm not going to read all of this. Basically, what we're asking for is twenty-one thousand fifty dollars to add to our budget. With this increase in funds, we'd majority want to use it to help with our staffing purposes. As you know, it takes a long time to get to Vashita from anywhere. It's my job to protect the community, and during the daytime hours, there's not many places to work in Vashita. So there's a minimal amount of people there during Monday through Friday, eight to five. We currently staff Monday through Friday, eight to four, on the weekends, all night long, all day Saturday, not Sunday at this time. So my goal with this is to try to get a second person for the majority of the time in our station, and to help with the appropriated money that we have. Speaking about districts and distances, we get a lot of our help from out of county, and we also send a lot of help out of county. We respond in the Iredle and Wilkes County, and many different places in Iredle County. Some of this just talks about the assistance for having two people, or the, the reason for having two people. Obviously, it's a quicker response, and we, we have, like I said, a long time for mutual aid to get into us. So we're really standing alone for a good amount of time, most of the time. We get to the calls a good ten minutes, most of the time, before a mutual aid does. And most of the time, that's the amount of time that it makes the difference between saving somebody or not, and their property. This highlights, you know, a thousand dollars is the same amount to fix an air pack in every district, but five thousand, to me, is a whole lot. It's a big deal. Five thousand dollars smacked to Vashita means something don't get fixed, or we do something different to make a change. We have done good with replacing apparatus and using used equipment. Our newest engine at this time is a nineteen ninety-eight model, which we bought brand-new in nineteen ninety-nine. It's the only fire engine we've ever bought, brand-new. We are the only fire department in Alexander County that can say we have run a hundred percent of our calls for several years in a row. That goes to the dedication of our people and a lot of time. And I want to thank our members, and our Board of Directors, and our officers that make that happen. It, it makes me look good, and I sure do appreciate it. Our community deserves it. It shows in here, we do have a three-thousand-gallon tanker, we are a heavy rescue fire department. We respond to a lot of everything, a lot of brush fires, we go through busy times, we go through slow times, but we always respond, and we're always willing to help our community. Along with being heavy rescue, we operate an ATV team of certified people. We do different things around in the county, and a big part of that was Rocky Face Mountain, which is in our district. We respond there, sometimes on a weekly basis, to help people and get them off the rocks and different things. Finding solutions, talking about the money, you can ask our Board President and our board, that I like to pinch pennies. I enjoy budgeting and money. I like to do the best that I can with it. And so I've put in here that we've requested to go up to zero point nine-five percent, or to receive that twenty-one thousand fifty in our extra, in our whole harmless money. Our current rate is zero point eight. We are ISO Class Four-Nine. We are also in the process of obtaining the property and all to build a second station. Like I said before, we have one of the largest districts in the county. It's a good fifteen minutes from our station, if you're standing in the fire truck, to the farthest point. We've got to go into Iredle, back into Alexander. We do have contracts in place with Iredle County that assist us with those things, so that our district has good response, and the people are well taken care of. I believe I've covered what I have in here. Guys, thank you for, for having me. Do you have any questions?
You guys have anything? Thank you very much, sir.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I apologize for not having this in your packets.
Well, I want to thank our fire chiefs for being here tonight, so we do appreciate that. At this time, we'll call Ben Faulknerberry, County Attorney, to resolution opposing NC House Bill seven sixty-five.
Artie, before Ben starts, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
I'd just like to say, I appreciate all of you coming tonight, and I don't beat around the bush. I think I've been to as many fire chiefs' meetings as anybody sitting up here at the front, and I appreciate what y'all do, but, you know, I think the taxpayers are, are pretty strapped right now, and I want y'all to have everything you need on my behalf. And I've got a lot of wants at home. I'd like to have a new tractor, but I don't see how I can buy it. And, but, on behalf of me, and I think the other guys sitting up here, we're going to try to get you what you gotta have, but sometimes, we don't get all we need or want. So I'd just like to say it up front, and we'll see where we come out.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I am presenting to you tonight a resolution for your consideration in opposition to North Carolina House Bill seven sixty-five, which is entitled "An Act to Reform Local Government Development Regulations in this State." Some of the key provisions of this bill that will negatively affect the county include, number one, the provision that every regulation, whether it be a new ordinance, or a repeal of an old, or an amendment, would require the county to produce a fiscal note, which is a study on how this will affect the cost of housing. That must be done for every regulation prior to the adoption, amending, or repealing of any land development ordinance. This requirement will place an undue burden on staff. If it's something staff will, cannot accomplish because of its complexity, it will put a financial impact on the counties, we will have to contract for these services. These are, these notes, notes are also speculative in nature, and have a look-forward period of five years to determine what impact that they will have on the cost of living. This bill will also create potentially new li, legal liabilities for counties and individual board members. This includes the Board of County Commissioners, the Planning Board, or the Board of Adjustments, whichever role they are serving. This includes punitive damages, over and above any compensatory damages or actual damages that may be sought in a lawsuit. The bill will also extend legal liabilities to staff for certain administrative decisions. Again, this is carving out new causes of action, while also giving legal remedies above and beyond punitive damages, is what I'm referencing, what our established law has already created. This seems to be in stark contrast to, again, the established law, where quasi-judicial hearings, whether, whether it be within the Planning Board, or this board, such as special use permits, or variances, and legislative decisions, such as the ordinances themselves, where board members are tasked with making difficult decisions, where there are often two sides to every story, they'll now have to face potential legal recourse, and the potential for punitive damages. Can't stress that enough. There are adequate protections under existing laws for not only property owners, but also for our staff. There's no need to create any other causes of action under this new law. Most of these positions, specifically the Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, are volunteers who choose not to, who, many may choose not to continue. It may be difficult to find members to, to, to serve on these boards in light of these potential legal ramifications, and many frivolous lawsuits that may come after this, this potential bill is passed. Legislative decisions, such as the adopting, repealing, or amending the Land Development Code, they're always been legislative in nature. This bill will disqualify board members from participating in discussions or voting on such legislative decisions or political decisions if they have had any prior undisclosed conversations or opinions. In my opinion, this chills not only our public forums that we have, in many instances, and public hearings that we have, and in many instances that we have for land development regulations, but it also will disqualify board members. And if you do vote, if you do participate in, in any discussions, having those prior conversations, again, you are exposing yourself to potential legal liabilities, not only in your positions, official positions, but individual, individually. The bill effectively removes the county's authority to adopt or enforce development regulations as local leadership sees fit. We've recently, in the last two years, gone through this process already. We've had public, we've sought public input through public meetings and surveys for not only our Land Development Code, but also for our 2045 Comprehensive Plan, which is thorough, and it's exhaustive, and it's based on public input from our citizens. This bill would effectively, effectively remove that public input, and, and be based on what Raleigh deems best for Alexander County. We are unique, and we must be able to adapt and respond to our own environment. Land development regulations for counties such as ours, which is mountainous, agricultural, and rural, will not work statewide, and should not be mandated by Raleigh. Some other limitations on our development regulations as they currently exist, this new law will limit density requirements to a minimum of four units per acre. We currently have waterfront, waterfront residential districts, which include minimum lot sizes, which would no longer be available to local governments. It would limit ability to mandate sidewalks or driveways when not abutting a DOT-maintained right-of-way, limits ability to dictate parking lot standards. The American, Americans with Disability Act standards would be the only standards that would be enforceable, and it limits our ability to require secondary emergency access for housing developments under certain circumstances. All of these, as they currently exist in our own development regulations, are for public safety and public purposes, public policy purposes. But again, we would not be able to, to dictate those rules as we see, see fit. For these reasons, I ask you to please consider the resolution in opposition, as this bill will have a negative impact on our ability to dictate development-based needs as we see fit, and it will also put an undue burden on county staff and our boards and our decision-makers. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution?
I make a motion to approve the resolution as stated.
Second. Got a first and a second. Any concerns or questions or comments to be made?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would just make a comment. I think this is another example of, of politics at its best. My feeling, well, and let me say this, my real job, the way I feed my family, I, I have a small residential construction company. We build and sell houses. And I think the intent of this bill, I think, I think the intent is very positive, and would be very beneficial to citizens of Alexander County. But I feel like, as happens a lot of times, to get the support it needs in the House and/or the Senate in Raleigh, and it's the same situation in DC, in my opinion, but, you know, so-and-so says, hey, I'll support it if you'll put this in it, and then some so-and-so says, hey, I want this put in it if you want me to support it. And, and I think it's, like I say, I think the, the initial intent of HB seven sixty-five, and I, and I have seen information from the North Carolina Association of Home Builders, who have, who have people in Raleigh pushing this as hard as they can push it. You know, I've seen information in emails from the Home Builders Association, you know, saying all the wonderful things that House Bill seven sixty-five, you know, excuse me, the wonderful aspects of House Bill seven sixty-five. And then, I also, you know, I also see the negative aspects of House Bill seven sixty-five. And like I say, I think the initial intent is, was to try to control housing costs, which I don't think anybody disagrees would be a good thing, including myself. I have two daughters, both recently have graduated from college, both have jobs, both are engaged. Both are looking at housing, and going, daddy, we can't afford to buy a house. And, oh, by the way, if you want to rent somewhere pretty nice, close to where our jobs are, we're looking at twenty-one hundred dollars a month, you know, or seventeen hundred dollars a month, or something crazy. And, like I say, I think, I think the intent is good. I think, I think, like happens a lot of times, it's gotten, it's gotten bounced back and forth between, you know, represented... forth between, you know, representatives of large urban areas to be beneficial, you know, to certain areas. And with that, with that happening, there's all this neat, you know, all this, all these things have gotten added to it that some of the folks in Raleigh feel like would be protective of the people, but in all actuality are ridiculous. And I guess I said this because I want to say I wish we could, I wish our system, be it local, state, national. I'll be the first one to say I think our local system works a lot better than state or national. But, I mean, I wish, I wish they could, I wish people could get out of their own, I wish our representatives, and I am not talking about ours specifically, because ours specifically, I think, do a fabulous job. I have, I have nothing but good things to say about Representative Blair Edens and Senator Eddie Settle and what they have done and are doing for Alexander County. But I wish some of these guys would get out of their own way and actually look at what's best, what's best for the people without ruining it with, with addend, with text amendments and addendums and inclusions. That's all I'll say.
Anyone else?
Is there any other counties that's doing this, do you know?
Yes, there are. I know Ms. Starnes has reached out to other counties. Numerous counties and municipalities have adopted this, this opposition, resolution opposing House Bill 765 in one form or another. The North Carolina Association for County Commissioners has also recommended this resolution for counties to adopt.
Okay. That's why I was thinking, I just wanted to make sure if there was somebody listening that they understood that we're not the only ones.
We are not the only ones.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing that I would, that I would say that I think we could potentially look at on a local level, and I'm not saying that we have the answers. I'm not saying that there's, that there's something that we can magically do, snap our fingers and do. And I'm sure I'll be criticized because there are people out there looking for things to criticize me about, especially, you know, considering the way I feed my family on a daily basis. But I do think at the local level, state level, and national level, there are going to have to be some things done to try to legitimately control housing costs. Which I guess is, you know, as a guy that sells houses, I should want them to be as expensive as possible. But, you know, that's not, and that's not true because the reason houses are so expensive is because it costs more to build them. It's not because the builders are making more, it's not because, it's not because the guys in construction are making tons more money. It's because the 2024 ICC Residential Building Code is expected to increase the cost of an average home in, you know, in North Carolina, somewhere between $16,000 and $21,000. Because they're making them, you know, because the government's trying to protect us from ourselves even more. And, you know, and when those, when those, you know, when that stuff's put into law, a lot of times, they don't, they don't think about, hey, this is going to cost people a lot of money, and this is going to make it where some people can't afford to buy a house. You know, which you always hear, you know, the American dream is to buy a house with a nice little pink fence and, you know, have a little family and have a job and, you know, we're, we're slowly taking that away from ourselves. And it seems, it seems that there's no end in sight at this point as, you know, when it comes to housing costs. And if there's something that we, that we could potentially look at, you know, and I say we, but, you know, through our planning and zoning departments, you know, I don't know. But if there's something that we, you know, that we can do to help folks that want to buy, you know, that want to own a home and/or even rent, or just people that want to live in Alexander County, if there's something we can do to help that, you know, help that at the local level, I think that's something that we need to look at.
All right. We had a first and a second. So a call for the vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, sir. And Mr. Falkenberry will be bringing our budget ordinance amendments to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two budget ordinance, ordinance amendments, number 35 and 36, and also a project budget ordinance for the America 20, I'm sorry, America 250 North Carolina Project. Budget ordinance number 35 amends both the general fund and the solid waste fund by increasing the 911 communications budget to reflect a North Carolina Emergency Management Deployment Grant funds that the county has received to reimburse for Hurricane Helene responses to other areas in western North Carolina. It also budgets for a transfer of FEMA grant funds in the amount of $8,325 to the solid waste fund to reimburse for the cost of grinding storm debris from Helene. Budget ordinance number 35 also budgets for a general fund transfer of $5,000 to the America 250 North Carolina Project to supplement the $10,000 grant received from the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. I'll speak briefly on that in just a moment. Budget ordinance number 36 amends the opioid settlement fund to increase said fund budget due to the requirements of GASP number 96 or the Government, Governmental Accounting Standards Board statement, which governs the, governs the accounting treatment of subscription-based information technology arrangements. This increases, expected, increased expenditures and revenues of said fund by $125,000, but it's important to note that this is a book entry only, which is required for financial statement presentation, and no additional expenses from the opioid fund will be incurred. This budget amendment will not affect the county's general fund balance. And finally, the project budget ordinance, which I referenced earlier, is for the America 250 North Carolina Project. That, America 250 North Carolina is North Carolina's commemoration of the nation's 250th anniversary and is led by the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. This ordinance is to establish a multi-year budget for the Alexander County's commemoration of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. $15,000 shall be appropriated for the project, 10,000 of which is from the grant from the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, and 5,000 being the county's contribution. It's my understanding this $15,000 is dedicated to a fireworks show, which will be scheduled as close as possible to July 4th, 2026, as possible. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. I know Ms. Herman's also in the audience as backup.
Do we have a motion to approve the amounts?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve budget ordinance number 35 and number 36, along with the Alexander County Grant Project Budget Ordinance, America 250 North Carolina Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, right hand? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, Mr. Falkenberry, any updates and announcements?
I do. I just wanted to share with the board and our citizens some updates on projects and events that are upcoming and that have begun moving forward. These are very exciting announcements that affect our community. First of which is the board will be conducting a budget work session on Monday, May 12th at 6:00 PM, which is exciting, I know. But it shows the dedication that this board has to working on this budget. And that will be at the administration office, 621 Liledown Road in Taylorsville at 6:00 PM, in the downstairs conference room. The ARPA waterline project began construction of water lines today, this morning, at McAlpin Lane off Church Road in the Wittenburg community. We're definitely excited to see that project bring much-needed water infrastructure across the county to get started. Also starting today was the EMS expansion at Station 1. Of course, that will bring an expansion of the existing building, the existing facility, including a five-bay garage and additional office space. That will provide crucial ambulance housing and a dedicated training area for our EMS personnel. Mr. Signe is in the back. I'm sure he's excited about that. I am excited to announce that the North Carolina Department of Information Technology has awarded a continuing, or, excuse me, a completing access to broadband grant to Yadkin Valley Telephone Membership Corporation, or ZIRIS, in the amount of $3,305,768. This grant will assist in providing our citizens which, with access to high-speed internet to connect them with their family, with telehealth and work opportunities. This award will provide high-speed internet access to 394 homes and businesses in Alexander County. That represents 14.78% of the county's eligible locations, the uncerved or underserved locations. So we still have a ways to go, but this would say, this is a big dent in that, that percentage of our population. This grant is directly from the state to the contractor. There's no county match. There's no procurement from the county. This is directly from the state to ZIRIS. I would encourage anyone who's listening or anyone in the audience that has questions to contact the NCDIT CAB program directly at CABprogram@northcar, or nc.gov, I'm sorry, They will be happy to answer any questions that anyone has. And if you feel like you're a citizen that's unserved or underserved, they can assist you in how to participate in any future programs. The 394 locations that I previously mentioned, they were, they were already proved previous to this award, so this is not a list that you can sign up for, for this round of funding, but hopefully in the future that this type of program will continue. This Saturday, May 10th, at 7:00 PM, kicks off our summer concert series at the Courthouse Park. Julio and the Saltines will be performing, so we look forward to seeing everyone out there. Again, these are concerts that are provided free of charge to our citizens. As mentioned earlier, the public is invited to a ribbon cutting and park opening ceremony for Bethlehem Park on Friday, May 9th, at 10:00 AM. Park has been technically open since April 1st, and our citizens have already begun enjoying it. Those improvements being the new 30-by-96-foot restroom concession picnic building, pickleball courts, a new playground, half-court basketball play areas, new lightings, new lighting with steel poles and LED lights. And it looks great, and we're excited for the community to take advantage of this new park. Again, that ribbon cutting is scheduled for this Friday, May 9th, at 10:00 AM at Bethlehem Park. Those are all the updates and announcements that I have, if anybody has any questions.
Moving on, everyone's had a chance to review the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
First and a second. Everybody raise your right hand if you approve. Motion carries. And Mr. Falkenberry, four is yours again.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to NCGS 143, 318.11A, four and five, ask the board for a motion to go into closed session to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including any agreement or a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations, as well as to establish or instruct the public body's staff concerning the position to be taken by the public body in negotiating the amount of compensation and other material terms of a proposed contract. I do not expect any further action after closed session.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, right hand? We are now considered in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you.